Work session.
Not all of you.
We'll call the work session.
Most important people.
Judge, what do you think? You're out of order.
I thought you was gonna say alright, is it?
We'll do that here momentarily. We'll call our work session for July eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, to order at this time. If everyone could please either silence or turn off their cell phones. And then join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Denise, can you go over our agenda, any changes?
Our only change is on our OLCC liquor application, um, order of the application.
Okay, thank you. So, we're, uh, first time that today is a tense, we're gonna go down to our other business and Jake's got his whole crew here, so we're gonna call him first and we're gonna call him Kevin after.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's a proclamation.
Yes.
That the Board of Commissioners generally meets.
Yep.
Um, and that's just proclaiming this week, Community Supervision Week. Uh, time to reflect and, uh... Pay attention.
Pay your honor.
You are...
What's that?
Pay your appropriate honor.
Yeah, pay appropriate honor to the folks that do the community supervision on a day-to-day basis. Um, as I've said before, it's easy... The great work we're doing in the community, it's easy to try and take responsibility for all that great work, but I'm not the one in the trenches with the folks in the trenches from the work crew folks, Buddy Mast, to through the juvenile department, all through the adult department, from our office manager, through our POs, um, and back again. So, the work they do is to be congratulated. They, not only are they great people, but they're great employees and represent great kind of work.
Very much agree. So, would you like me to read the proclamation?
Absolutely.
And then Judge, are you gonna wanna say something afterwards?
I am not going to publicly say it.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to give you that opportunity. Okay. Whereas, community justice is an essential part of our justice system, and whereas, community justice professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right for the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas, community justice professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community, and whereas, community justice professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders, and whereas, community justice professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and whereas, community justice professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy, and whereas, community justice professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and whereas, community justice professionals advocate community and restorative justice, and whereas, community justice professionals are a true force for positive change in their communities. Excuse me. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Lake County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim July sixteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen, as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week, and encourage all citizens to honor these community justice professionals, to recognize their achievements. Signed this day, this eighteenth day of July, two thousand and seventeen. Thank you very much. Here, here. Anybody wanna say anything? Steve's here.
Yeah, I, if, yeah, I've worked with each of you and just wanna say how much we appreciate your partnership. I support the Department of Corrections and in our community very well, and what you do is important for our community. So, thanks. Very much appreciated.
Oh, confirm what Steve says. I wanna congratulate the Ken. You've got a great community corrections staff. They provide valuable services, um, to the community, not only in supervision, but all the community service they do, it really helps the community. Maybe congratulate them.
Yes. So, thank you very much, all of you, for all the good work you do each and every day.
I, it's without saying too much, but, uh, thank you for the team that you guys built all the way through, from Buddy and the community service workers out there, to the PO officers and everything, the juvenile department. As a commissioner, very rarely do we ever get calls or anything. And that has a lot to say with Jake's crew underneath him and the team that you guys make. So, thank you all very much. This is, this proclamation is, is true. It's what it needs to be out there. So, thank you guys for your service. Appreciate it.
Maybe lastly, not just for this week, but for the whole year. Thank you.
Judge, Steve. Thanks for showing up.
Okay. Can we do?
Usually we do.
Yep. Oh. Check our plan this week.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the proclamation as read.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to accept the proclamation as read. Any other discussion? In favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Denise. Okay, Kevin, would you like to come up and join us?
Morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How are you guys?
Oh... Oh...
Better than Monday, tomorrow, good Friday?
Yep.
How's tonight?
Sick, just been a bit. Um, in front of you is a recommendation for the road department trade. Nineteen ninety-two John Deere grader and a mini excavator on a John Deere three-ten SK backhoe. This backhoe offers availability for our future maintenance work, both on the grant projects that we have planned, potential grant projects in the future in the form of drainage work and sometimes unplanned drainage work, but also offers road department flexibility and some mobility in cleaning and replacing cattle guards. We're going to implement some concrete footings under these cattle guards that we clean them in. This piece of equipment offers that availability.
Well, I know in our discussions that, you know, since you're hiring back in the fall, you're really big into, and we appreciate it very much, for vintage type things. And it's really sounds like this piece of equipment will allow me to do the day-to-day, the actual, we're making things out for...
Yeah, that...
Storm events, et cetera.
Yeah. Unplanned flood events, but also planned drainage facilities work that we intend on doing in the next several years. So, this offers that. We demoed, demonstrated two different machines in comparison. We'll be putting some under drainage on this project, and this machine here offered everything we needed and that, uh, kinda gold for our dollar amount along the trade. I think attach that as some email chain on some different things that we've entertained with different vendors, but this machine here puts a, puts a bill for it down.
So, the final price, and we'll, we'll take this up tomorrow for approval, but the final price after all the tradings and so forth will be eighteen thousand five hundred.
Balance due after trade, yep, eighteen five hundred.
The fiscal impacts, eighteen thousand five hundred.
Yep.
Of this seventy-two thousand five hundred cost, so we're doing pretty good by trading.
Yep.
Plus, this machine will be used. It won't be sitting.
This machine will get, will be gainfully employed.
There you go.
Oh, that sounds great. Yep. Kevin, before you leave, if you would mind turning your mic on, I'm gonna ask you. Turn it up there a little bit so you can refer over the, the video. Don't typically talk to the camera, but I, I just wanna give you the chance to kinda update us about the citizenry on the Dog Lake project, if you wouldn't mind.
The Dog Lake project, um, this first phase of the Dog Lake project is nearing its, its end for construction season. We should be paving hot mix asphalt the last week of July. So, starting Monday, we have four days of hot mix asphalt to install. Um, the project started April tenth when we began to mill off the recycled asphalt and just have been working consistently on it since then. So, um, we will then, after we put some hot mix asphalt, put shoulders on, we'll put some line, temporary line painting on it and, um, some signing up, which those incidentals will conclude in August, in which we won't be working there until the following season, and then we'll start again in April on the second phase of the job.
That's perfect. Is there a, kind of, idea of where we're at, what we're in?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I think Mr. Hall had in his one, um, piece in the paper, some tentative schedule. We are, we will be done with hot mix table here this last week of July.
Great. Seems like the road looks kinda really well, and we're gonna have a very nice road when all is said and done.
It'll be, it'll be a good, a good job when it's nearing its completion.
Now, do we still have, just as a quick question, do we still have planned, uh, road advisory meeting this fall? And that being one of the things we look at?
Yes, I'm uncertain of the date. I know we talked about that to review. I wanted to wait to review to include, so you can see the hot mix, but not all, also the shoulder machine that we acquired to put shoulders on this machine as well, so that road advisor can see a finished product.
And remind me, not for right now, but later, we do have some folks that are interested in joining the road advisories.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take this up tomorrow for approval.
Just, um, different agenda item. There's road vacation. Darwin isn't here to talk about that. Did he visit with you on that?
He, he briefed, he briefed me on this before, but this was, uh, this was, uh, if I'm not mistaken, a, a, a public way.
It's a public way, yeah.
Yeah.
As a road official, though, you have a certain amount of jurisdiction, even on public ways, you see no problem with that?
Yeah, we, he and I talked about this before, and, um, for us needing through way there, it's not necessary.
Wouldn't we get to it then? I know you, you want me to get out of here?
No.
I just asked that question, make sure you didn't see any issues with it.
No, he, he and I discussed that, uh, before, and, um, and I, we have some hot mix coming today, but calibrate that indicator, so I wanna get that.
Yep.
No problem. Okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Jake, I do know you have one other item. If you don't mind, I'm gonna just take care of this OLCC application ratification. Commissioner Leonard's last Brady, Denise had, uh, one of the folks from the store at A.D.L. on her office this last Friday, but, yeah. And she went through the normal process, had reached out to, uh, the sheriff for the, for the, for the playback. No issue.
No issue.
And apparently, had mentioned to the store owners that we had approved it and it was signed, so they came down and prayed, rather than have them come in and not have a signed document, having it signed it, so.
I, I understand, yes. Ratification, I, I think it's only, nothing to do with this particular one. I think maybe tomorrow I ask the legal counsel to spell out exactly what the process is for these, so that all departments, we sort of have it in writing.
Yep.
You can put out. But anyways, I'll, I'll move to accept the ratification of the A.D.L. stores' OLCC application as presented by Roger and Kaver, who's the applicant.
I'll second it. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to accept the ratified, the ratification of the OLCC license for the A.D.L. stores presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Jake, juvenile detention MOU.
Thank you.
Jake.
Okay. Uh, before the board is the random of understanding, um, with Pine County juvenile detention, like you said, Pine County juvenile department. Uh, the price is still a hundred and ten dollars a bed day for two hundred and twenty bed days a year. Still up in the fourth quarter, so that's, that creates to fifty-five bed days a quarter. We've had a great working relationship with Pine County, overall, both adult and juvenile. And this is, uh, is the same MOU that we signed last year. They haven't raised the rates on this in a couple years, which is good. And we have a huge, we didn't use up all our beds last year in sixteen, seventeen, which is also good.
Yeah.
So, uh, but this money guarantees us that we have a bed, so it's gonna be money, climate gets, but it also guarantees us that we need it.
It's a good deal.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe we do have it on tomorrow.
Yep.
For adoption, so.
I, I believe, I mark that the county council is aware of that, and I, I did get an email from him. Just wanted to make sure I marked it.
Yeah.
Council's really...
You do.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again for all you do. Dave.
Mr. Burnham.
Have a good day, if you want to.
Only if I want to.
Exactly.
I'm not sure if I want to hear it or not yet.
Well, we'll find out.
Okay.
Whatever Dan says.
I tried.
Whatever Dan says.
Did you get that, Jimmy?
Okay, our, uh, dead Indian agreement come to our lease for the building we have up there for the communication site. Uh, our twenty-year lease come up in December. They have, uh, they have a new way of doing things when it comes to having, uh, agreements on federal land, so we had to do this new application. And basically, what I need from you guys is, uh, well, first of all, only, only thing that's on the communication side is the ZX, uh, rant for, uh, a private mobile radio service for them. So, we provide them just no cost to ZX rants to have their communication stuff in there. Reason why we don't charge them any, is if we charge, then that's when the federal lands charges us, because we can't make a dime by us having in the lease agreement. So, right now, it's exempt to the county. We don't have to pay, as a local government, we don't have to pay anything. It's just a wash agreement between the federal and, and, uh, but if we, like, we let ZX in and if you as the charge then, then of course, it just doesn't work, so that's why we do it that way. Uh, if there's only one that's entered at this time, the ZX ranch. So, I guess what I need from you guys, I just need the approval from the board to, uh, put in this application for the lease agreement.
Couple of quick questions, Dave. You'd mentioned before when you were researching this, before we really knew all the, we now know. Uh, is, if there's maintenance requirements on the site where they house the radio equipment in our building in lieu of any payment, which I understand what you're saying, we can't charge. If we charge, then the federal government charges us. Can we have a separate agreement with the ZX that's gonna charge for occupying the site, but you will maintain it to the standard that we're reporting to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that's what I'm actually looking into. You and I talked, that's actually, I'm gonna get Mark Williams and talk to him about. We have to maintain the building.
Yeah.
You know, through the federal, federal, but in our eyes, we can have whoever in the building take that responsibility.
As long as it's being done, and if it's not being done, then they'll be in, I don't think, or our agreement will be a thing.
Plus, we don't know in the next twenty years if we'll need to go back and occupy that area.
Exactly. We, 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 we kind of toss around about getting rid of it, that we might need it, came here from now. Something like, kind of, things change, you know, through the communication world, as we all know, so.
The actual building, we own the actual building.
You own the, it's been on there. So, basically, I don't know, as far as approval, I don't know if I just need a, a letter, a written letter from you guys. There's really no signature as far as approval from the board. I just need an approval letter of some sort to, uh, to put the application that the local government approves.
Wasn't just a signature from the chair enough?
On the, on the act's application, there is not a signature. There's a signature from me as the facility manager, because I'm the applicant, Dave Burnham, authorized agent, Lake County.
So, on probably a couple of sentences, we can simply say, the Board of Commissioners, you know, the group is, uh, leasing, uh, twenty years.
Yeah, exactly.
With the application. Is that something you can make happen and help us tomorrow?
Commissioner, I'd rather have a three-page written letter of support written by Dave, Mr. Burnham, and we'll just sign that.
You know how some of these letters of support, though?
Are you sure you want our support, Dave?
I think you're in a building if I try to three-page.
I, I need support, whatever you need from the board.
Well, I was just gonna say, sometimes we never actually end up seeing that letter of support that's been drafted out.
I just... I got that one.
Okay. Copy?
Copy.
Have a good day, Dave.
Very good. Thank you.
If you want to.
I'm deciding, yeah.
Thanks again, Dave.
Thank you. Thanks for research and all that. I know it wasn't easy. Darwin.
Hello. Morning. Thanks, Denise, for the reminder to be in here this morning. I put this in my calendar a moment ago. But, uh, just quickly, uh, Frontery Farms has, uh, had a previous road vacation for, uh, off of Fossil Lake Road, a mile north of Christians Valley Highway, heading back to the west. In between two pivots in two thousand, or sorry, in eighty-two, I believe, was the year they had vacated previously, the platted Pindulps Road between the pivots, and this request is to continue that west and then between two other pivots, just to the north, as you make a ninety-degree turn to the north. Pretty simple request. The only affected property owners are us. Three sixty-eight points three five one allows us to vacate without a hearing so long as the property owners make that request and file the necessary paperwork to do so.
So, tomorrow we should be taking action, right?
That's my recommendation. Either, you need it either from myself or from the road master, road department, so I make a recommendation.
Commissioner Leonard did ask Kevin while I was here, and said we'd talk to you.
Yeah, and, um, Jeff Hedlund, um, I know I emailed him the factors, information, but, uh, he made a request for Frontery's, and he may show up tomorrow, but should be pretty straightforward.
Great.
Yeah, thank you, Darwin. Yeah.
Thank you.
And, uh, we got Pine Commissioner already, and if you think on your agenda, I'll keep, get ready for that.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Denise.
Do you wanna do the foreclosure designation first? I can, or just a brief.
Are you gonna do it for, yeah, okay.
Or I can call the...
Nope, nope.
It's just our annual designation for our, our closure list to go with county examiner. We do this every year.
Yep. And we have it on tomorrow for acceptance, so.
Perfect.
Transit software.
Software. So, as you know, during budget time, we touch that, doing some transit software. RFPs, um, to get our transit program up to where it needs to be for reporting requirements and whatnot. We did go up for RFP, we requested three, we received two back. Looking at these, I'm working with our IT contractor, Mr. Brown, and with, um, the state. My recommendation is gonna be to go with, get their software with their first option. That option is for unlimited use, rather than restricting us to eight users. Right now, our program, we have eight vehicles at, in our, that we own for our program. That really limits us in terms of our volunteer drivers and any future providers that might wanna come in. So, I didn't wanna limit us to that. And the other two that we received, the second option and the other submittal, the annual costs were just way too high for this program to be able to sustain. On route match, their overall first year cost was forty-seven thousand versus the twenty-three, with an annual cost starting at eighty-eight hundred and increasing to just over ten thousand per year, which would significantly impact that program. So, those, those were my factors on why I'm recommending what I'm recommending.
Sounds good. So, tomorrow you're recommending this, uh...
Get there software.
Yeah, get, get there.
He's starting to blaze over, but I got it this time.
And he, I know you still work everything.
He briefed me this morning.
I, I was thinking it was gotta-go-home software or something. Okay. Now, for tomorrow, we do have an email, something changes, so that I'm down to, to that part. We have one other, uh, discussion I, it was, oh, it's here. Thank you for being so timely, Jake. Jake Collins.
Been outside waiting for hours.
Yeah.
Listening for, for a moment.
Okay.
So, we, in the last union negotiations, we included some comp time language in there. So, we're gonna give it a, a year trial run, and then the language in the contract stated that it would automatically sunset after. We think the experience has been good. The management department hits like it. We're using it, we're saving money. And we're still limited at fifteen hours. It's a really small amount. So, what I propose is that we continue this experiment, this trial period, through the end of this union contract for two more years. And, but I'd also like to propose one change, that we had included in the original language that we would pay that comp time out every time someone got an increase in salary, COLA, STEPS, anything like that. Really, is, that, that is, that doesn't, that makes that comp time not work. Makes it unwieldy for people to use. Example, we have an employee last week who, who worked a few extra hours, intended to use it this week. We would've had to pay that out, or we will have to pay it out if we...
Yeah, the only difference then is just the slight increase times the number of hours.
Slight increase.
Where it's such a limited number of hours, that's insignificant. And in a lot of cases, we wouldn't necessarily, couldn't be anything, we have to actually be using it as part of the way to...
Yeah.
How to take... Every, you know, everything about this sounds really good. I think it's a good reason not to approve it.
That would be government thinking, so put it.
Yeah. Yeah. So...
It's allowed us to, it's allowed the department heads to have some flexibility, as well as, you know, the employees. It allows us to, this gives us a small amount of wiggle room to try and avoid all the time.
Well, I, it sounds like it's all good. The only thing I'm worried about is we need, this is, we're almost doing negotiations here, when you're wanting to extend it two years to that. We can't do that today here without our representation here, and probably even discussing that with the union and their representation, because this would be different impacts in the contract. So, it would be an amendment to the contract, and so we have to follow the rules and the guidelines. We don't want anything to trigger open up the whole contract or anything like that, which it should, it, our...
So, what I'm proposing...
But we need to follow a process.
Yeah, you're right. The original language says this, this clause will sunset. The union's already approached us and asked us to continue it until we, continue it as it is, until we get this worked out, until we had a chance to discuss it. So, what I propose... So what I propose is, we use that same language that it still sunsets at the end of this union contract, two more years. So it's not automatically going to renew, it's not in the contract. The union would have to bargain for that.
Well, I think we're exactly where we wanted to be after a year. We need to, the negotiating team need to look at it, compare it, we say it's a cost savings to the county, compare that, make sure that that's correct, and then ask if the union would like to amend that we don't have to pay out and rework that approach. So we actually should do our due diligence and look at it, do the comparison, we said we were, so that the negotiating team sees that, the union sees that, and it is very much defendable from there on.
Okay.
So how soon could...
I haven't talked to Mr. Bailey about it all, um, we talked a little bit the other day, Nikki and I had.
Jim, are you here tomorrow?
Jim will be here tomorrow.
Okay, I won't be, he won't be. I can talk with him today, though.
Yeah, let's, let's...
I think we're still on a status quo, at least through the middle of this, maybe even, I'd have to read the print, you know, exactly, but the answer for status quo, I think through July.
Yeah, until we're able to...
And basically, that sunset language just says it has to be either we keep on going with it or we don't, if we don't address it, so.
I think you could pull together a conference call with all the parties.
I think we're just getting through the absolute process there, so we don't run into any glitches in contractual.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
So are you okay with status quo until we can pull that off? Meaning, what we agreed to for that first year?
Status quo until we, I think we've already accidentally made that agreement, not accidentally, but the timeframe was that we hadn't had a chance to review it, so until status quo, until reviewed and official decision or amendment is made, I think is very acceptable to me, and I think...
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine. So I'll contact Jim Bailey and try and get that set up.
Yeah, the intent definitely was to be able to, if it's the right thing, to continue it on, and that's, we just ran into a timeframe with some unique situation that everybody is working on.
Yeah.
Had nothing to do with the union side, it had to do with just business as usual. An unusual business, maybe.
So you're gonna...
Business as unusual.
Yeah. Communicate with Brent, too, or do you...
Yeah. So, yeah, we'll get together as a bargaining team and then make a proposal to the union.
So it's on tomorrow's agenda, I think, that discussion is...
We might even be able to have a conference call this afternoon or something.
We'll leave it.
We should, we might be able to, I'm just trying to make sure we follow the process is all I'm doing.
Yeah, and just, Jay wouldn't be able to attend tomorrow, probably not even be at home.
But yeah, as you say, maybe this afternoon, something to pull together, and you all could come up with a recommendation.
Legal counsel could present it?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, very good.
Legal counsel could present tomorrow, since Jay's not here either.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, our time died, it was at ten o'clock, and we have...
AOC will be doing it.
Right. She's gonna be here in person, isn't she?
Correct.
Okay.
She will be doing a PowerPoint presentation for you.
Okay. Well, liaison updates, Steve.
I'll start off, and it's perfect because of, Steve is here, Mr. Brown is here. Yesterday was our packed meeting, prison advisory committee meeting, it was a very, a very good meeting. One thing I'm gonna brag about, especially with Steve here, is, is Warren Creek Correctional Facility, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is the only institution in the state of Oregon that came in on the black on their overtime and personnel cost, and that comes all the way through, from the employees all the way through the supervisor, all the way, so as I told Steve yesterday, it makes it much easier for those of us in political positions to promote and show how important it is to continue to keep this minimum security prison here, so, am I correct, we're the only one?
You're correct, we're the only facility in the black and overtime, there is, I think, a couple other overall, our budget is in the black, but we were the only facility for overtime, budget in the black.
And so that's, that's huge, thank you very much, once again. Other thing is, we, there was a presentation Chad Nigle, Novel, was there, and on sustainability, had a lot of presentation on gardening, on raising sage, sagebrush and several different things, it's really quite interesting to hear about all our prison systems throughout the state of Oregon. I forget how many pounds of vegetables were produced in a year, I'm right, I would really botch it, but it was like a million pounds?
Thousands, thousands.
But it is an unbelievable amount that helps offset the cost per operations and other things.
And giving back to food shares locally.
What's that?
And giving back to food shares locally.
Yes, to the food share, so it was a very good meeting. The other thing is, and I forget the date, they're gonna have a bike and car show, is that the twenty-third?
Damn it, Brad. Put you on the spot, well, you put your employees on the spot yesterday.
That's right. I believe it's in September, right, Brad?
Could be, could be, but I don't think that the public really realizes all the things that are worked on out there that actually benefit our society, and those of us that's been on the pack for a long time, it's sort of become a routine, and I hate to use that word, but yesterday was very enlightening to sit through the meeting yesterday, always so professional. So I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add about any of the audit wire creek that's going on or anything, Steve?
Just one thing that's pretty exciting, you know, Jim Walls with LCRI and I are working with Surprise Valley, we're excited about the possibility of installing a solar facility on the grounds to offset our electrical use and the dependency on fossil fuels. Everybody has been supportive and excited about it, so we're just working out some of the details, and we're hoping, you know, that that's gonna come to fruition for sure. And then adding some greenhouses, possibly wind generation, you know, part of it is to offset our reliance on fossil fuels, others is, it's a great example of sustainable energy use in a state facility that is also benefit to the taxpayers of Oregon, so we're excited about all those opportunities, and all those opportunities provide opportunities to adults in custody to learn skills and trades, so it's good stuff.
I thought you might mention that, I knew I probably wouldn't hit that one quite right. The other thing, as far as, not contract employees, but state employees that are fully staffed out there, which...
Except for our nurses.
Except for nurses, and that's contractual, isn't it?
That we just don't have anybody to hire.
Yeah.
We can't find a nurse to hire, so it's a challenge, not only with us, but the hospital and all over the state of Oregon, so those medical professionals are difficult to find. And you add life view and working in prison, it gets harder.
The other thing I have to report on, we had our executive act meeting for area committee on transportation, had a legislative overview on the transportation package, and there's still a lot of unknowns, but there's quite a bit of excitement out there statewide as far as in the future there being dollars for enhancement and possibly preservation, all preservation work and different things. There's some questions that I had around Connect Oregon that haven't been flushed out yet. On Connect Oregon, there will definitely be a certain amount, I believe that will go towards trails and bikes. There's other triggers within this legislation that a lot of us are anxiously waiting to see what it really means, I guess, and I don't have any particulars I can say off the top of my head, but for our executive act and for our full act board, where we've been sort of just continuing meetings and working with what, what dollars are available now, it looks like there should be some good work in the future for us to try to find dollars and fund certain projects, or STIP, or process, or, I forget, I hear discussions out so far, twenty through twenty-two or something like that, STIP projects, we took a look at, a quick look at that, I didn't have any off the top of my head that are onto that list now, that's just if you're on the list, there's potential. We did have a discussion, I would like for, if the state of Oregon is able to find dollars, I'd really like for them on the OFL dollars, the federal highway dollars, or federal lands dollars, to maybe apply for some of those in this next round, or deep precurs, trying to get us on that correction down on Highway one forty, so I'm really pushing for that, that's sort of the, the process that we've been working in Clint County side, they use some of those dollars, they're gonna be put on the ground around the lake over there, very bad spots, so, sort of excited about some dollars becoming available there. Probably continue to work on railroad issues, legal counsel will be here tomorrow, so that's short version of some of the things going on.
So I'm gonna ask Stacy, who just joined us, how long is it gonna take you to set up? You were on at ten o'clock at the time, right?
Not very long, Denise had things on a jump drive, so, yeah, just tell her why she's gonna pull that up.
Well, I'm gonna do my liaison updates, and then we're gonna take a little break while you get set up before ten o'clock.
Perfect.
Okay.
Commissioner Shown?
Yes.
Can I just follow up? So the car and bike show at Warren Creek Correction Facility is September twenty-third, it's a Saturday, eight to ten thirty, if anybody would like to attend, Ms. Johnson, eat your leads, forms filled out by August thirty-first, so the public's invited.
Eight to ten thirty?
Eight to ten thirty.
Should take community partners.
It's less than an hour.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if she coordinates much of those things with Denise, but if she could have Denise's email, then that would, she could prod us.
Sure, get a flyer to Denise.
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
By the thirtieth.
Sounds like a pretty fun, yeah.
Yeah, it's been very successful at Snake River Correction Institution Ontario, Penitentiary in Salem, that they've been doing Penitentiary in Salem, I think, for like thirty years.
So is, is it gonna be inside?
Yes.
Inside, the cars, their bikes, inside in the yard area? With the inmates themselves.
Mm-hmm, so the inmates get the participation, yeah. And usually they'll have a best in show competition where the adults in custody get to vote on which is the best car, which is the best bike, and just allows a lot of positive pro-social interaction, those guys.
I didn't realize that yesterday, I thought it was in the parking lot out front.
So Greg Baker gets my Honda, my Toyota fifty cc's up and going, my, my every one of them.
Would I like that?
Just to show.
Honda fifty cc's?
Yeah, just a little puff, yeah, nineteen seventy-seven. He's gonna have them down this week.
Nice.
Really nice.
We'll give you a contact with people providing the show, and maybe you can get a part of it, and that'd be fun.
I'm gonna jump in.
Anybody that has a classic that old must be a classic themselves.
That's right.
So I've got a handful of updates I wanna give before we take a real quick break. I'm gonna start in the middle. Steve, did Charlie Pike get ahold of you about a meeting next Monday or Tuesday?
Charlie Pike?
Yeah, we'd like you to attend. Matt, I'm the liaison to workforce, and I met with Chip yesterday, Chip Massey from KCC, and it's gonna be at one o'clock in the afternoon, I'll have to confirm, it is Tuesday.
Okay.
Next Tuesday. We're gonna have a handful of folks here trying to strategize on the overall program in Lake County, now we're gonna make sure financially it works. There's been some serious reductions in funding for the VOA program in general, so...
Happy to be here if I can.
Yeah, that, we'd really like to have you there, and that's probably all I'll say about workforce right now, but except for the fact that KCC is gonna have a almost weekly and not more often presence in the form of Chip Massey, their coordinator, here in Lake County. We've gotta make that transition happen as soon as we can. I was just gonna quickly say, in part with Stacy here, I talked to Mike MacArthur and made sure that he understood our appreciation for a smaller family, Ackland, with our roads program, county roads program, Association of Counties, counties have done, I think it's pretty well-known now, the forest road, the Dog Lake Forest Road that had been closed on the forest side has now opened again, and the long-term vision is a complete repair through a series of funding, federal highway, Western Highways Association, Emily knows all those terms, but it was her work that led the agency, the Forest Service, to be able to have the money necessary long-term to make the appropriate repair for that very significant road failure out there, that's not the first time it's happened, but the, I guess somewhat the short version was, they applied and they were denied, when Emily was down and found out, she went out there with the road superintendent and actually asked the question, because it's so ironic, the road that failed is beyond the county road that we're redoing in its entirety out to Drews and Dog Lake and on out, and the reason, the primary reason we get those, Commissioner Winters did all of the heavy lifting from the Board of Commissioners on several projects to do with federal highway, but that one is because of the connectivity to forest recreation, and we had a failure on the forest side that wasn't gonna be funded to be fixed, but yet we had a great new road that would get you to the unusable road.
Yeah, but it's very close.
And when Emily pointed that out at the Oasis meeting to all of those in attendance, there's quite a little bit of shuffling that went on from there, she met with me at the WIR meeting, the Western Interstate Region meeting up in Sun River here a month or more ago, and explained all that, we got the connection with the Forest Service folks, and anyway, they resubmitted, and it sounds like it's almost a done deal that they're gonna get the several million it's gonna take to fix that route appropriately, so, thanks to Emily, almost entirely, I mean, if it wasn't for her, it wouldn't happen. Speaking of funding...
Well, if you wouldn't have brought it forward, Commissioner, you need to include a little, you're the one that carried the torch to get it to the right people, so thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. We've got, we've got great people in high places that make things happen, and so, thanks to AOC and Emily. New state road funding, the short version of that one is the legislature did approve new funding, new revenue sources, not gonna try and regurgitate all of the sense per gallon and the increases and the changes in registration fees and bicycles and all of that stuff, but for Lake County, and quite honestly, and just, it just recently happened, Emily got one of the folks at AOC engaged, it's a moving target on what it's really gonna mean, the special county allocation we're gonna be part of, we believe it's gonna be a fairly substantial amount, there's all the six counties I think in Oregon that are gonna share on that, prorated for road miles and population, it's the same formula, but that's aside from the new gas tax registration fee, revenue sharing, and we're gonna see a fairly substantial boost in that, it will not make us whole for our needs on an annual basis for a maintenance program, not an improvement, but a maintenance program, but it'll get us closer, and it's really pretty exciting to finally be able to see it with that move, because that's been worked on the legislature for the last couple of sessions. As I mentioned, workforce planning, that's a continuation, I just wanna have a permanent, the juvenile, or the juvenile, the youth side of it, the short story on it is, it's gonna be ran through districts out in cooperation with KCC and the agencies, the federal agencies that have been partners. The adult side, that's where we're trying to make a sync... The adult side, that's where we're trying to make a singular position whole with financing, because it provides a ton of different services besides just workforce. Historically, that, through COIC, which is what KCC wants to model, they provided OED services, Oregon Employment Divisional Services, with no reimbursement, I mean, they've just been doing it to help our citizens, and so, there's a lot of different things that, that we think this group's going to be able to identify, and maybe we can come up with some monies to help offset the shortfall and make sure we have that service in the community. Congressman Walden, been in conversations with him, Commissioner Winters has been our lead on Red Rock Biofuel and all the negotiations from natural gas being brought into the community and on out through it, to community service fees and all of these different aspects, as well as my weekly, I think you guys had your conference calls, I've been involved from the fuel side of things, but what we're hoping to do, short version on this, Congressman Walden called me last Thursday and wanted to get the contact information for Jeff Mantranak, so we'll, we'll find out exactly what that was, but it's probably a little bit of a spinoff of the fact that Biz Oregon got ahold of us and let us know, the director for Business Oregon, that the bonds that Red Rock was needing were issued, they weren't issued, but they were approved to be issued on the thirteenth of July, so I think you read between the lines, we, we believe there's more promise than not, but there's a lot of things that get said in our community that probably shouldn't, just because of confidentiality of things, and we'll let those who are making those decisions and investments make their announcements when it's appropriate to make those, but we really do think we're heading in the right direction with Red Rock, and...
And we can say that they're shovel ready.
You can say that.
I can say that.
Because you heard that from the horse's mouth.
Yep.
So thank you. And while that's being said, and I know I followed up with Jimmy Hall, our reporter for The Examiner, I think that we don't have time today, and I don't think this is exactly the right forum, but when I mentioned natural gas, I think there's a lot more to be said about that and where we're at with natural gas, not just running through our community and, and the tap that the Board of Commissioners had agreed should be put in when the original line is put there, but, you know, there's a lot of discussion about the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and the Jordan Cove Project, we've all three been involved in that pretty substantially, relative to Veresen, who is the company doing it, your work with Avista over the years and Steve Vincent, relative to the community getting natural gas put into it, as well as some industry opportunities and the clean air opportunities, it's, none of that's new, but it is starting to move the right direction relative to, to what the Jordan Cove Project being approved, which is a federally approved process, I personally believe it will be, we were asked to sign a letter of support for the project, and I think we were both on record as saying, we will support what those other counties would like to do, because it's not a Lake County issue. There's a benefit to Lake County when that's put in, because there will no doubt for Oklahoma be a second line that comes through our county, and that taxation for the different taxing entities that qualify where the line runs through is, is pretty, pretty significant. It won't include the town of Lakeview, unfortunately, they're not in the taxing district, they weren't on this line that we're current, that we currently receive taxes on, but there's a lot of positives there, but the more important part for Veresen is if they do get the approvals to do the Jordan Cove Project, they have discussed with us individually some things through Avista that they'd like to support our community on, but I think that's, once again, the company's right to tell us in their own time and in their own way what that is, it was, it was kinda talked about in the article Jimmy did, but I, I think that it's appropriate for them to, to share that, so. That's the end of my liaison updates, and I'm just about ran us to the end, so I think we're gonna take a short break here. Oh, Ginger.
I just have a very quick update about the brownfields project, the city of Paisley has agreed to participate in the consortium, so now we have the three, the two municipalities and the county in agreement to investigate and move forward with this. The Cardno, the environmental engineering company, will be looking at trying to schedule a time to be here that is gonna be conducive, hopefully to everybody's schedule, it's gonna be difficult to get us all in, in one place at the same time, but we're gonna go for it sometime probably towards the end of August, and I am going to go to Christmas Valley and talk with Parks and Rec Department, it's really probably the only quasi-governmental entity in that area that I would like for them, I think it's important to let them know about this and to ask them...
They are a taxing district, they are a taxing district.
Yes, right, so I think to let them know what is happening and to ask their cooperation and participation, and as soon as I can get some time scheduled with them.
They're the one that received the property from us, that was a...
Correct, right, right, so I really wanna make it complete, you know, with the entire county, but I just wanted to let you know that that is in the works, and, and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We're gonna take a short break, we'll reconvene around ten o'clock.